I call to order the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, December 13th, 2023. The first order of business is the approval of the October 25th, 2023 minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? Do we have a motion to approve?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
Okay. The next order of business is the following new business where we will consider the petition of West Lynchburg Baptist Church for a conditional use permit in an R3 medium-density residential district to allow the use of a portion of an existing structure as a childcare facility preschool at 3031 Memorial Avenue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Planning Commission's purpose of this petition is to allow a portion of the existing structure as a childcare facility and preschool at 3031 Memorial Avenue. The property contains approximately one and five tenths acres. The city's comprehensive plan, or future land use map, recommends an institution use for the subject property. These areas include our religious, educational, and other nonprofit entities within the city. Examples include churches, cemeteries, private schools, et cetera. The property is zoned R3 medium-density residential district. Childcare facilities and preschools are permitted in this district upon approval of a CUP from council. The subject property contains a two-story church that was built in 1950. The building contains, that might be the addition date, and it might be pre-1950. The building contains approximately 46,000 finished square feet. If approved, a portion of that building would be used as a childcare facility and preschool for students ranging in age from three to four years old between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., five days per week. The petitioner has indicated that the YMCA of Central Virginia would be renting the space from the church and operating the childcare facility. The facility would have a separate entrance on the Shenandoah Street side of the property. Drop-off and pickup would be located in that parking area. The city zoning ordinance requires that childcare centers provide a recreation area. The existing playground is located just across the street, just across Eldon Street, and is connected via a crosswalk, and the area is enclosed with a fence. The impact of the childcare facility should be minimal since it will be located within the existing church. There is ample parking and the existing recreation area already located adjacent. The city's technical review committee reviewed this petition on October 31st. Comments were minor in nature and will be addressed prior to occupancy of the building as a childcare facility. The planning division recommends approval of the CUP petition.
Thank you. Who is here to speak on behalf of this petition?
I am, Dr. Chris Jordan, Senior Pastor of West Lynchburg Baptist Church. Good to meet you, Madam Chair and the commission. Thank you for allowing us to come and share. This is Rebecca White, Representative for the YMCA, who can address those concerns. I've been the pastor of West Lynchburg for the last three years. Came from Atlanta, Georgia, and have really enjoyed the Lynchburg community. Our goal as a church, it's a 118-year-old church, is to see how we can serve the community. We've been upgrading our building over the last three years. And then this last year, as we've been praying, how can we have an opportunity to serve? TC Miller had to shut down because of the freezing of the pipes and bursting, and so we took in 250 students and faculty into our facility for three weeks in this emergency time period, was able to see that our building capacity could hold this type of thing. And certainly, we're still in partnership with them as they're back in their area, but we see that our building, that we adequately use for worship and other things on Sunday and Wednesday nights, but we have a building that could be used for greater purposes. We also saw that the third largest need in our community is childcare. We're an underserved area. And so, look at this area where we could help with school readiness for three- and four-year-olds before they move into school. We certainly want to assist in that. And through great circumstances, through time, we connected with the Y because they were also looking for space at the same time. So with that, we're just excited to be a partner in the community to help where it is needed. So I'll turn the mic over to Rebecca to share a few thoughts.
You kind of said everything.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. No, that's fine. And for the YMCA, yes, again, looking at the community needs, we are a community nonprofit, and we are looking to serve the needs in our community. We've worked with Centra over the years, talked with them, again, identifying through a needs assessment that that is the third highest priority in our community, knowing that we can meet that need with the YMCA being an expert in childcare. We do this regularly through before and after-school programs, summer camps, and other youth programming. So we consider ourselves a viable partner, and like you said, the opportunity to connect came available. It's really hard to find space. That was a big challenge for us initially, and so through actually an employee of ours that attends the church mentioned something, and we started having the conversation. So we feel like it would be an ideal location. It would serve the population in the area. We'd easily be able to access it, and we feel strongly about being able to make this happen.
Great. Well, thank you.
Excellent.
Do we have a sign-in sheet that we're?
Angela was going to grab one. I can just do a...
We're just going to ask you to sign in, and then we might get you to come back when we ask questions.
Okay.
Come back forward, but we're going to, we have to go through our normal
Sure.
protocol here. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the petition? Okay. Is there anybody here to speak in opposition of the petition? Okay. Then the public hearing is closed. The public party's closed, and I guess we'll ask our questions.
I don't have any questions. I think it's a wonderful idea.
Great partnership, it sounds like. Certainly a great need, so.
And I'd echo that. So I have a business in this area, and I had an employee who had to travel to take his child to this kind of preschool, and he lives maybe three blocks from there, and my office is two blocks from there. And so, when I look at those kind of opportunities for employers, this is a really important thing for our community. We saw something like this recently over on Gray Street. I like to see these kind of opportunities, so thank you.
I just have a quick question. With regards to, I'm looking in here, so if I've missed it, I apologize. But have you done childcare at this scale before?
And y'all?
At this facility, more specifically.
Thank you.
The YMCA has done a preschool years ago. It was before I was involved with the YMCA, but there was a preschool program for a while at our downtown YMCA right next to it. We have, well, it is now a corporate office, but at that time was a preschool. And so, we have operated in that space. We are not in it to make a profit, but at the time, it was probably not as viable. There are other supports in place now, even statewide and things like that initiatives to, for school readiness that help really support childcare facilities now. And so, we feel well-positioned and have done that homework to make sure, but we have done it.
And how about the facility itself, the church itself?
Yes, in great shape. You know, for, well, that particular building that we're using was built in 1963, and over the last three years, we've renovated that and made all the space fresh and brand-new, and it's more than adequate to accommodate the 70 students that we're thinking about being able to house.
So I have?
Yeah, thank you.
By the way, I also echo
The previous, their comments. I think this is a great opportunity.
Yeah, I completely agree. I think it's a wonderful use and how awesome it is that you discovered that with helping the TC Miller students, and just seems like it was all meant to be, I guess.
Absolutely.
So, all right.
If there's no other, if there's no other things, I mean, just, in my mind, this is a grossly underserved resource in Lynchburg. With that in mind, I would move that we accept the motion as proposed.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck at City Council.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the work.
Yes, I know. Good luck to getting it up and running.
Thank you.
Sure. See ya. I forgot to vote on the minutes. Do we need to go back and take a vote?
Why don't we just clarify that really quick?
Yeah, just a clarification.
No, I think the room is throwing us off.
I know, I know. All in favor of accepting the minutes for October 25th, 2023 is written. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The next order of business, do you want me to present this as the same way that I present the other things?
Sure, yeah, just read out the...
The next order of business is the consideration of amending the zoning ordinance by adopting Section 35.2-73, colon, 1, decommissioning surety for energy storage facilities. The proposed ordinance would require a written agreement for the decommissioning of an energy storage or solar facility prior to site plan approval.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of Planning Commission. This zoning ordinance amendment would affect energy storage facilities, which are considered major public utility services by our zoning ordinance. These uses are permitted by CUP in all residential districts, all of our commercial districts, all institutional districts, and the I-1 restricted industrial district. They are permitted by right in our I-2 light industrial and our I-3 heavy industrial districts. An example of the type of the project that this ordinance would apply to is, for example, the battery energy storage facility, which stores power from the electrical grid at off-peak hours and then resupplies that power back to the grid during peak hours when demand is higher, which is a petition that Planning Commission reviewed, if you recall, in March. It would also apply to solar projects, which have not really been done within the city yet. The amendment was initiated by staff to ensure that energy storage projects within the city have an agreement in place to decommission all the equipment, facilities, and devices associated with these projects, so that they are removed and properly disposed of when operations of the facility cease. The draft ordinance, in addition to requiring that agreement, which would be approved by the city attorney, also requires a surety, which ensures that the developer of the project has financial means to carry out that decommissioning that would be required if needed. The terms of the agreements would be determined on a project-by-project basis and approved by the city attorney's office prior to execution of those agreements. And one sort of housekeeping clerical note, the zoning ordinance amendment we're talking about today was advertised in our legal notice as Section 35.2-73, colon, 1, as the chair read it, but that section refers to telecommunications facilities. So after discussing with the city attorney, planning staff recommends moving this to 35.2-74 to clarify that energy storage systems are separate land use and do not follow under, don't fall under telecommunications. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance as drafted. And we also have the city attorney here, Mr. Matt Friedman, if there are questions about the ordinance itself.
Okay.
Before you go ahead, could you say that slowly for me? We took it off the telecommunications, or it still applies to telecommunications?
Okay, so there is a decommissioning requirement already in telecommunications. When this was initially drafted, it was sort of, the section made it sound like it was a subsection of telecommunications. We're just clarifying that it doesn't fall under telecommunications. This is a separate land use and a requirement for that land use.
Okay. And it's like in a form of a bond?
Would be the surety. But I'd be happy to answer questions after the public hearing.
Okay. Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of the petition? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition of the petition? And the public hearing is closed, and we may now ask our questions.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if this is like a road naming, but
I know, I know.
Because I've never seen anything like this. So it's just like a surety bond, like a developer's bond, that they would pay in advance to be held?
Feel free to come up to the mic. But yes, it would, basically, you have the agreement and then the surety, which ensures that you actually can follow through
Have the funds.
if we need to.
The battery storage facility in March, that was the one on Rusens Road? Is that right?
It was on Harbor Street, but near Rusens, yeah.
In Rusens, yeah. And so, this doesn't apply to home solar panels or anything like that?
No, it would not be for residential type.
Yep. Have you had?
Something you would do through a building permit. This would be a project coming through for a site plan review.
Have you had an issue before where an energy storage facility went out of business and left a huge, so this is just kind of a protection for the future?
This is proactive. It's not, and I, you know, I don't know if it'll be happening with any of our lifetimes. I'm not sure the exact lifespan of these things, but it's something we're doing prior to that becoming an issue.
So does this apply in the battery storage place? And I don't exactly know where that is, but if that has been moved through, does this apply proactively to that, or is that already done?
They've received, they've received a CUP for that project, but they have not received site plan approval.
Okay.
So this specifies that
Press cover.
Prior to site plan, it would cover it.
So that, yeah, that's great. I mean, it seems like a good
You end up with, you know, regardless of what your energy source is, at the decommissioning, you end up with stuff that's got to be taken out. I mean, then probably has some, probably has some negative, you know, environmental impacts. And to me, this seems predicated on handling whatever that, whatever that burden has. I don't know how you figure out what that cost would be, but fortunately, that was not handed to me as a problem. So this, my point is, is that this seems to make sense because you know the problem's coming, and the fact that you're doing it prospectively seems to make sense to me.
To answer your question about how you determine that amount, the ordinance specifies that it should, that the estimate should be prepared by a qualified engineer who has experience with decommissioning, so they're not just pulling a number out of thin air.
The only, and the only thing that's not covered in that particular situation would be like what we just did with the, with the situation on Harbor Street is, it started out looking like this, so it would have gotten approved. Would we also, would they also do if they enlarged that or added a second? I'm just saying, same space.
Yes, so if they, so if they were to expand, one, I believe they would need to revise their CUP, but two, they would need to get that approved through a site plan as well, so.
So there is an ongoing mechanism?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Yes. And please forgive me if I get a little long-winded about this. I do have some background in real estate, over 20 years in real estate and nearly 10 in the power generation industry. So I do have some familiarity with this, not an expert by any, by any means. And as I read this, it looked like a simple housekeeping item, but the more I read it, a couple of concerns, potential concerns came up. What these, what these things generally are, for those who may have a lot of familiarity with them, is they fall under something similar or an umbrella called the Renewable Energy Pilot Program. I'll read some of this. It's implemented by the Virginia State Corporation Commission, and some of it is that this is a business model, whereas if you can generate electricity in some way, you do not have to be utility. You can generate it, and the SEC requires, if you meet certain guidelines, that the local utility has to buy this electricity from you, and it's a cottage industry, it's popped up in various states. So most of the solar panel fields you see going up are independently privately owned. They're not owned by utilities. Same with that battery storage thing. They store electricity generated during the day when it's expen, excuse me, during the nighttime, when it's cheap to buy it, and let it out during the day when it's expensive. Same thing with the pumped hydro type things. Anyway, long and short of it is, utilities also do this for themselves. They use this to supplement the grid, to moderate out, we call the sine wave of the grid. Grids operate on a wave, and if this wave gets disrupted, usually by something like a, an intermittent source like wind or solar, when the clouds come over, these things tend to shut down, and you need something that can moderate these things. Don't want to get too wrapped around the axle with that, but the gist of it is, is these programs compete directly with large utilities to generate electricity, and the utilities have to buy it. So with that kind of as a foundation, let me ask, these are called power purchase agreements, and these aren't anything new. They've been around quite a while, okay? So I guess my first question is, what was the impetus driving this change? I mean, how did it come to the city's attention that this is a matter or a problem that needs to be addressed? Because the surety requirement in this proposal would seem to narrow the potential players in this to a very select few companies that would be able to do this, and I can explain why. So first, what was the impetus driving it? And second, which companies were consulted in the drafting of this proposed ordinance?
Great questions. Just for the record, I'm Matt Friedman. I'm the city attorney for the city of Lynchburg. So as I understand, and I don't want to get into too much, you know, because I don't think it's been made public yet as to the negotiations, but there's a company that the city has been negotiating siding agreements with for these battery facilities within the city. There's going to be two of them that are coming up. So and I anticipate, you all are here about it, if it doesn't come through the process, you know, you'll, you'll see, because I believe there has to be a public hearing before City Council, before an approval for something like that. So because of the specialized nature of these agreements, the fact that they get the benefit of certain tax breaks and deductions through the state, through the local government, we have the ability to negotiate payments over a period of time from them. So the city consulted with an attorney that is a specialist in this particular field. As part of this process, what they saw was, is with a very large battery siding facility, we have to have a way to ensure that they're properly decommissioned in accordance with state and federal laws. That's where this ordinance comes into place. So this, this really kind of tracks what is permitted for the legislative approval process for local governments as it relates to solar facilities. This ordinance is designed to work across the board for different facilities that may come into the city. The idea is to be able to have a surety over the company's head to enforce the decommissioning agreement if we have to, but also to have the protections of a contract with the decommissioning agreement that's mentioned in this particular ordinance. So all of these, they tried to work in tandem. So the signing agreement is a separate process from the CUP, but as you all, you know, had addressed, the decommissioning agreement, I believe, can be either part of the CUP or part of the site plan, but separate from the signing agreement, yes, separate from the signing agreement. So that's really how it came to be. I can tell you, this is a very real thing that City Council's going to be considering in the near future, likely in February or March, I think, is where we're aiming for. So we'll certainly, if it's necessary, to come through Planning Commission. Obviously, you all will, will see those documents, but that's really where this comes from. It's just not out of the blue.
So this wasn't introduced as a, we're looking for this kind of ordinance from Lynchburg to help fix this problem should and when it arises? This actually came out of the city's offices based on some negotiations for some power agreements down the road?
So this, this arose because there's going to be a need to have it, because there's going to be siding agreements that are presented for approval at some point. So that's why it came up, because if you have the signing agreement and you enter into the signing agreement, they get, they get in there, they put all their facilities up, well, we have to have the ability to properly decommission them and outline that and have all that in that document. So that's, that's really kind of how it came to be, but it was on the city's desire to have this ordinance in place. This did not come from a third party. It's, it's the city's request to be able to have.
That answers that question. That's good. Thank you for that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to, you know, I was going to say that, like, since we've already seen this with, with telecommunications programs that we have, the systems that we have, I mean, we, we have seen, our city has a history of companies that have done things and then left waste behind, you know, brownfields, abandoned factories and things like that. So I actually appreciate that someone in the city would think about, think about the need to make sure this stuff is cleaned up, and batteries don't have the kind of lifespan that a Rock Ten does or a Lynchburg Foundry does, right? That was around a long time. It says, ah, well, hey, they were here a long time, they left some mess, and it's okay. So, so to me, I see it like that, as this is a protection for our community. That's where our land comes in, you know, the ability to protect ourselves. Am I reading it incorrectly?
No, I think you are reading it correctly. These are special facilities that have special requirements, and I think a agreement, you know, and an ordinance like this permitting those sureties is necessary, you know, and I believe the General Assembly contemplated that as it related to solar facilities when it passed that code section. You know, certainly with other facilities, there's ways to address other things for site plans, you know, for various telecommunications agreements. We can have removal bonds, to be able to have something in place, to be able to say, look, you know, you're under this agreement to remove them. If you don't, we're going to call in the bond and we're going to remove it for you at your, at your bond company's expense, which does not look good on them. So that's, that's how we address it typically on the norm, but this, this is special, is because these types of facilities are special.
Let me just point out, Todd, personally, I'm not opposed to this in principle. It sounds, and at first blush, when you read it, it sounds great, and I think you're doing a great job answering these questions. Matt, the, where it came from was, was critical, because this could have a number of sources. And if you don't get a good answer to that, the answer can begin to take another kind of shape. And part of that, for me, is the surety factor in this. These facilities can last 25, 30 years. And basically, the way this reads right now is you've got to have some way of guaranteeing that you're going to be able to pay to have this removed at some point down the road. These, a lot of these small companies, or companies putting these things are small companies, they're not even going to be around 25 years from now, 10 years from now. They might get bought up. They may not exist. And so, what it looks like, and here's just what it looks like. One, the fact that these things wouldn't even be called for 25, 30 years, there's no practical way for anybody to estimate what that thing's going to be, what it's going to cost to remove that thing 25, 30 years from now. I mean, it may be $5 million today, but in 30 years, what's it going to be? Is a bond going to cover it? And who's going to be responsible when that company's out of business? I see the need, and I think it's practical, but the way it takes shape, and there's some other things I got through in here that even add weirder things with some federal incentives up to half a billion dollars pushing these things toward utilities that were just implemented in the third quarter of this year. So that, if you factor that in, which I'll just leave that out for now. But what it could look like is trying to create something that is anti-competitive for small companies, because really, the only person who'd be able to build something like this going forward is a company that can demonstrate that it's going to be around 25, 30 years from now, because it's been around for 100 years or 50 years, a company that has almost unlimited funds, right, to do these things down the road, and has the capability of doing these things, and has an interest in doing these things. And that tends to limit it to a blue-chip company like a public utility, who does put these things in as part of their regular practices. It can look like an instrument to shun out smaller companies from doing these things, which they're doing like cropping up like tomatoes right now, to force them out. And if they're doing it not just here, but in cities all over the Commonwealth, it starts to look like something else, and it could almost start to give the appearance of being antitrust.
Well, and our hope, our hope wasn't drafting this ordinance is to really have it less specific than more specific. That way, you know, you're taking into account each individual company that's coming in, because like you said, could have a massive company, you could have a small company. But either way, whatever the services is that they're having for the renewable energy source, battery, solar, whatever it may be, you know, we would be able to work with them. you know, we would be able to work with them on whatever surety it is, and each company is unique, so.
Can you explain to me the surety, like, if I wanted to do this and I needed a $5 million bond or something, is what you say I have to have, can I go to an insurance company and get that?
So you could, or you could go to a bonding company, that's typically what I've, what I've seen.
And then you pay them monthly or annually?
I'm not sure how they, what their contractual arrangements are, but usually there's some type of parent guarantee agreement or a bond, a performance agreement, a removal agreement.
But it, it wouldn't be that I have to come up with $5 million out of my pocket and hand it to you and say, keep this for me for the next 50 years in case something happens, I don't.
No, I, that would probably be pretty rare for a company to have to do something like that.
Yeah, it works like an insurance policy, where you guys pay a fraction for the, for the benefit.
So I would think it would be like an insurance company. And the other, the other question, something he mentioned, that these small companies, or any company might go out of business, does, does this say anything about the developer, the owner, or its successor? Or does this, this bond or this document follow whoever buys the company?
It does, as I recall, there's, there's language in there that's, you know, a successor and interest language, and I do believe it's put of record in the clerk's office. So if, if it were to change hands, whoever takes on the property, you know, with the facility also takes the requirements of the decommissioning agreement.
And correct me if I'm wrong, because you made a comment earlier that I wasn't aware of, which is the city could call the bond if they felt like the company who was buying it was, was, was doing something they didn't want them to do.
Well, if, the only reason I think the city would call it is if they refused to decommission it.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
In accordance with the requirements.
So, so there's your, there's your, there's your accountability, I guess. If indeed you got into a situation where somebody was going to take over the facility and handle it in a way that was not advantageous. I mean, to me, this is pretty simple. I mean, I don't feel like Lynchburg has a lot of money left over to take out, you know, buildings that are, I mean, hate to say this, because, but for a long time it scared me, was the Jones Memorial Library. You know, it just sat and sat and sat, and at some point, the city's going to have to do something with it, and there's not funds to take care of it. Well, that's certainly not, that's certainly not a battery facility, but it, it speaks to the fact that you're trying to create a pot of money to take care of what you know is gonna, is, is going to be a problem in the future, in a time where you can be proactive and think about it. So I think it makes sense. I understand that, that the fears about being anticompetitive, but I feel like there's enough flexibility in the market to be able to, to address that. And anybody who can't play by those rules, now I get more worried because I can't believe that they're going to do and operate in a way that I would consider Lynchburg friendly.
Are there other localities that have these agreements in place, these kind of ordinances? That we know about?
I would, I'll say this, I don't have personal knowledge of, of that, because I don't work in particular in this area, but it would surprise me if they were not.
And you said that the legal guy that you brought in, who had some experience, this is one of the things that he had recommended, from his experience.
And their firm had worked with solar facilities.
Right, right.
And this was based on the idea of the solar facility.
So I would feel like, yeah.
I, and I would say, you know, I think, again, I think we, we go, you know, we're talking about how this impacts our land, and if we start talking about the, the anti-competitive, the business nature of this, I don't think that's our role. But I also think, to answer that, you know, that's where the entrepreneurial mindset of businesses actually make differences. And, you know, if, if we don't have these kind of frameworks, it doesn't incentivize an entrepreneurial focus on how to deal with our decommissioning. And this is the kind of thing that actually does push businesses to find ways to do things more effectively. So I, I think it's a great, a great thing, and I'm just looking online, other companies here that, that offer solar decommissioning bonds. I mean, I don't think it's an uncommon thing, it might not be something we're used to here, but we're also not used to having these kind of facilities. And I, I think, let's take, for example, the, the transfer station that's down along Blackwater Creek. You know, if, if AEP wanted to up and just leave that, and there was no, no way to enforce them to decommission that, there's a lot of nasty chemicals in that facility. So this is what businesses have done over the years, is actually leave a mess behind. So, so I think we're finding ways to deal with the stuff in a way, that's my thought.
If it's helpful at all, too, I know with these particular types of facilities, which, what these were being designed for, for the battery, the, the big concern is fire. So that is something we're addressing in the signing agreement, and also another reason to want to have a decommissioning agreement in place to alleviate the risk of, of that falling on the responsibility of the city.
As I mentioned, it seems like a good idea, and not opposed to it. I would just, for the record, say we, we may want to consider treading lightly with this or do a little background on how this has affected other communities. Because if it turns out having the effect that the only people who can qualify for these bonds are utility companies, that could set the stage, as you know, a lawyer, for creating all kinds of problems if the right, right people decide to create problems for us. If it's being done widely, it might not be a problem at all, you know, so hence the question. But, yeah, if it, if it's a good idea and it works, and how are, how are these bonds proposed to be computed? Is it a percentage of total estimated value of the, the plant now, or at a certain point in the future?
So I'm, I'm not, I may defer to Rachel on that one, but I'm assuming it would probably be the cost of the actual decommissioning.
Yes, so center, the city may enter into the real property without further consent to engage in the decommissioning at the sole cost of the owner, less the year developer must provide financial assurance of such performance to the city in the form of certified funds, cash escrow, surety bond, letter of credit, or parent guarantee, based upon an estimate from a professional engineer licensed in the Commonwealth acceptable to the city who is engaged by the applicant, who has experience in preparing decommissioning estimates. The estimate shall not exceed the total, shall not exceed the total of projected costs of decommissioning, which may include net salvage of such equipment, plus a reasonable allowance for the estimated administrative costs related to the default of the owner and an annual inflation factor.
So assuming the proposal is that this would cost $10 million to decommission, which is probably expensive. 25 years from now, you get a bill for 50 million. And is the bond assumed to cover this? Or, I mean, is it only cover the 10 million?
There's an inflation factor.
Well, but we're not talking about inflation, I mean, like, for, for example, pickups, I bought a pickup recently. These pickups increase by $10,000 almost annually, that's not inflation. So things, this is a weird economy that we're in, and, I mean, look at inflation, something between 7% to 12% per year, maybe higher. What's it going to be, 23? Look, I know it sounds like I'm being difficult, but these are difficult things and big deals, and you're affecting people's real estate and people's massive investments here. And I'm not trying to say we should do things one way or the other. All I'm suggesting is, if we're, we're saying, oh, this is going to be a process, we'll just compute what this is going to cost, and it's not going to be a burden to the business owner, and I can tell you, it's going to be a burden. And when you look at this up here, what do they have to show? They have to show either certified funds for this, does that mean currently in existence? You've got to show escrow, put aside at that time, complete amounts? Are we talking about, you've got to have whatever you can bank, escrow for the bond, and now the third thing is a surety bond.
So those are all options.
Those are all.
Options, right.
The, the idea.
So small businesses are only going to be able to use the surety bond, probably.
The idea was to be able to have options from a guarantee to a letter of credit to a surety bond to address the various types of businesses that, that may be involved in, in decommissioning.
Does this, like, if it's a 25-year, like, contract, does, does it say anything in here about reviewing the financial position? Any particular frequency?
It's highly hypothetical, I guess, is, is right now is what we're talking about.
So in my conversation with Mr. Friedman, I, you know, when I first looked at this, I thought, it looks really short. It, it's, it's not a long ordinance, I mean, we have code on code on code, right? Like, some of, some of these are very specific. And, you know, when I called Matt and I said, hey, I'm looking at this, and it just doesn't seem like there's much to it, you know, Matt kind of assured me that that was almost by design, because we want to give the flexibility to spell those things out in the agreements, rather than codifying and saying we're, we're really rigid on this, this, and this, which may weed out those smaller companies. And knowing that the scale of these projects can vary from, you know, a little quarter acre battery energy facility to, you know, a solar farm, which we may or may not ever get. Understanding that there is a, a whole spectrum there, allowing those details to be worked out in the agreements, rather than specifying all of that in the code itself.
Because this is very, I'm sorry, because this is very specific, I mean, as I mentioned, in principle, I'm not opposed to it. I'm going to support it with the confidence that, that we're actually going to move forward and try and work these things out. I see a need for this personally, I don't see a need to oppose it, but to me, there, there's some questions that there, even if we can't answer it today, they're, they're, they're going to come up, you know, and we, we all know that, you know? And there's no point in just ignoring that, that fact. And sometimes the shorter the ordinance, the broader the scope of how it affects people and businesses. So, yeah, I'll, I'll support it, you know, but again, with the confidence that we're going to try and work through the, and, and, and in the end, not be turning away the businesses that are probably primarily, primarily doing and benefiting from these things right now.
Well, and if, if it helps, these, even assume it's adopted by city council, if there's an issue that arises where we need to amend the ordinance, we can amend it to account for those, those issues, and it'll be right back here.
You know, by the way, it won't be the first time.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's, but I think that's, I think that's a positive. Because I think, as Chuck just said a second ago, tomorrow doesn't look like today, doesn't look like, you know, what it's going to look like next week. So I think we've been good about, I think y'all have been good about bringing up things and saying, this isn't working like we thought it was going to work. And I think they're always on intended consequences, and so I feel like, I feel really good that we have an evolving, involve, or evolving, involved group that, that chases after that stuff. So I think that's a positive.
Just out of point of information, does this provide you the ability to, for lack of a better phrase, check the financial, financial position of the company at any given point in time? Or is it just the initiation of the project itself? I don't even know if that actually is relevant to the, to this, I'm trying to figure out in my own ways of understanding this.
So I think their ability, on what it would cost, I mean, their financial backing is going to be through the bond and the letter of credit or whatever it may be. So the thing is, is if, if, I hate to say it, say it like this, but if it's a, a weak company financially, it's unlikely that they would get a letter of credit for $10 million, you know? So I, I think it depends on the company, but, you know, we wouldn't necessarily, I suppose, go digging to see what the financial viability of, of a company is with something like this. We would take them at their word that they're entering into a contract and being able to post these letters of credit, surety bonds, et cetera, to be able to, to do a project like this.
And the, the bond would, we would look at the bond to make sure that whoever's issuing the bond or the letter of credit is legitimate, and not just, not just somebody with letterhead, but.
But over and above that, you've got an expert that's got to be certified, that's essentially a third party, that's going to set, that's going to determine what it's going to cost. So there's a, there's a, a, a check and balance, if you will. They increase the size of their, you know, battery, or, or even upgrade, you know, back to your, you know, we're figuring new ways to do this, then they're going to have to come back in and reassess what that surety bond should be. The final thing, obviously, being can they, you know, do they have the financial wherewithal to pay for that?
And all these things are going to have to go in the agreement.
And all these things are.
It's not in the ordinance.
Right. It's, well, you know, because if you get to the new CUP, you have to increase the, if you have to change the site plan, it would be in the ordinance. So I'm just saying, there are places, there are checks and balances in place, they're not perfect, but there are checks and balances in place, and worst-case scenario, let's say it's worth 10,000, they only come up with, or 10 million, and we only come up with 5 million, that's still 5 million that we save, rather than the 10, you know, that we would have been on the hook for.
Oh, you're, you're exactly right, exactly. Every point you're bringing up, I think, is valid. What I'm pointing out is that right now, it's hypothetical.
Yeah.
None of it's in the ordinance. So all of this is going to require very specific language and very specific agreements for very specific properties, for very specific parties. And who's going to write these things, are we going to have a, I mean, they're going to have to be written. And I, that's where my faith is coming in, that we're going to have to.
That's where the site plan process comes in, because that would be the same thing that you do for.
As a, as a condition of approval for the site plan, that agreement has to be in place. And I know that Mr. Friedman's office has been working with the, the outside counsel who helped us develop this ordinance on kind of a boilerplate starting point for these agreements, where they, they have a lot of this articulated, and I'm sure we would consult them again if we needed to, for individual projects.
We have a, kind of a starting place form agreement and a, a guarantee, parent guarantee agreement as a starter. But every, like I said, every project's going to be different and have to require a different agreement.
Well, I mean, I think this is a really healthy discussion, and we've learned a lot about it. I think in the end, this ordinance puts the city in a much stronger position and protects the public better. It may not be perfect, and we may have to revisit it, but I think it's going the right way. And I, I would, I would make a motion to approve this petition, this changing of the ordinance as it stands.
I'd second it.
Any more discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Any more new business? Any old business?
No.
We have, next meeting is January 10th.
We, something?
We should have a public hearing ready for you there.
Okay.
Do we have any new members of this?
I don't believe there have been any appointments yet.
So this isn't my last meeting?
Well, you weren't counting down or anything, were you, Nancy? No, I'll have to speak to the, the clerk of council about, about that. Yeah, I've got a surety here.
What's your, what's your life?
The bond would be a lot less costly if we weren't working on a comprehensive plan.
Yeah, yeah, let's get through the common plan.
I, I'll follow you, follow up with you.
Any new news on the Indigo, Hotel Indigo project?
I have not heard anything recently, no, since the Jones Memorial Library came up, no.
It's kind, it's interesting, it's just kind of sitting there.
It doesn't mean nothing's happening, but, not, not to my knowledge, I'll say that.
Yeah. Do we have a motion to?
Make a motion.
Yeah, to adjourn.